Well, it'd be from my seat. I'm sure, I wish there was a whole lot more people here to take this information in. But, you know, we do have Eric and we're gonna have, I guess that'll pass on the information on to other people. So it's still what we're doing.
God, I hope.
It must be a busy time for everybody. Anyway, good luck with it.
We will also have all of these printed and available for people to pick up at the front desk on Monday. So there's that capacity too. People can come and get the information and take it home, read it at their leisure, and then call me or Kate.
And ask questions.
Or any of the council members.
Okay, so we're here tonight to do our public hearing for the Flimflon Aquacentre Build. We've kind of split it up a little bit. I'm gonna talk more about the design and the construction and the actual pool build itself. I'm gonna walk you through the design and architectural drawing. So I'll keep my seat here so that I'm not standing in front of any of the photos. And then Lynn will discuss finances and some money and she'll do that right after. So, and then after that we'll do questions or do you wanna do questions in between? Do questions after in between, whichever you prefer, if anybody has any. So we'll just get started here. This is the Flimflon Aquatic Center Build Design and Architectural Drawings. Okay, so the first drawing here, you can see, all of the photos will be labeled in the top corner. This is architectural renderings for the exterior view of the new pool build. Give everyone a second to take a peek and then I can go through. If anyone has questions, give me a wave and I'm more than happy to answer them. This is a bird's eye view of the exterior view. You can see on what would be your left hand corner is the seniors housing. Right hand top corner is the water treatment plant. Forward through here, so this is entering into the space. We would call this the vestibule space. So it's your entrance before coming in. It's the space between what would be essentially your entrance from the outside. So it's a cooler space before entering what we would call the nadatorium space. So where the heat is a little bit higher. So you're coming into this location first and to the left you can see the entrance doors. This is the reception area. So you've just entered those doors on the right. You can see this is kind of one side. You can see a lot of glass. There's an entrance to what we are calling the multipurpose space. And we're going to carry on in this building in a clockwise motion. So we're gonna look to the left. This is the left reception area. You can see again the windows. This is where our staff will be situated. We're gonna carry on down this corridor. So you can just kind of see it from another angle there. You can see that parents that'll be waiting or caregivers will be able to see into the pool. So there'll be seating areas there. Anybody that's waiting for lessons or an event or class that's upcoming, you'll be able to see right into the nadatorium space. So we've come down the hallway, turned a corner. This is our entrance into what would be the more heated zone. And this is where the change rooms and dressing rooms are. So you're gonna enter this door right here. Here's one that's a little bit kind of further designed by our architect. So you can see the arrows pointing you in the direction of the change room, shower rooms, family space. Okay, so this is inside one angle. Of course, these are just architectural renderings, so they're not exact. They don't necessarily show the exact colors, nor necessarily the specifications when it comes to, you know, what the sink will look like or those minute details. So we'll see those as we move forward and as we get photos of actual product that's going into the space itself. On the left and right hand side, you can see lockers. We've looked at a couple different styles. If anyone has swum in the, I'm losing the name of it, the pool in Lloydminster, Alberta. They have a really neat locker system. You can do it with an app on your phone. You can set it directly on the lockers themselves. It means that there's no carrying around keys, no loonies or tunnies or change to carry with you to get access to those lockers. And they reset every time you log out of them. So someone else will be able to go in and use that locker after you. So this is another angle just from the entryway. When you're standing at the door and you're about to go in, you can see the lockers on your right hand side, your left hand side, the sinks. You can see some seating bench area. And if you look far in the right hand corner, you can see the opening out into the pool basin space. So, so this is the lap pool area. The colors are fairly consistent. They were looking at a lot of concrete and white with wood accents and a lot of glass. So we'll be able to see outside. Something different again if you're looking at the diving blocks. In most CAD programs, diving blocks don't exist as an option. So they're just shown here as cubes, white cubes. But those are just placeholders. So it'll be a four lane pool. We will have access for racing, so competition swimming. We will have the depth for synchronized swimming as well. You can see the long bench area running on your left. And so that'll be spectators seating for races. It'll be, you know, a spot for grandma and grandpa to sit and watch their grandchildren swim, to throw your towel if you need to. If you can see, it might be a little bit hard in the back when you see them on print. It'll be a little bit easier. This back wall area, I told Lynn we need a pointer stick. You can see there are showers out here as well. So that would be, lots of times you see them at lakes. You see them in new pool builds. You see them in hotels a lot. So you can rinse off, you know, make sure your suit's rinsed off, things like that. If you're going in and out, if you're switching pools, if you're, you know, trying to get little ones ready really quickly. And you can see what we're calling the leisure and therapy pool at the end. So those are two separate pool bases. Yes?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
On the last one, to the benches, are they gonna be accessibility type?
Yes, they are.
Like someone like me that can get up with all their armrests or?
Yeah, absolutely. So height requirements with regards to accessibility are different depending on what you're looking at. But we're looking at building the entire thing to make sure that it's best suited to everyone that wants to come and use the pool.
Like someone that had a knee replacement comes and, that's what, seventeen or eighteen?
Seventeen, yes.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, absolutely. So we wanna make sure that it's as accessible as possible to as many people as possible.
Thank you.
Okay, so this is just kind of another angle. If you were sitting on the bench, I guess this is the view that you would see. You can see again the white cubes. Those are where we would put lane rope storage. So kind of, if you can remember back to the old pool, the lane ropes were stored at the far end. This is our lane rope storage area. You can see emergency exit doors and entrance doors into the mechanical and I guess the stairs that go down to the mechanical room and the chemical room. So those will be right off the pool deck there. And you can see the start of what would be our zero entry ramp as well. So you can see those two railings past this woman, AI-generated woman here on your left. She looks like she's coming up the ramp. I'll see if I have. Okay, so again, this is kind of, we're moving down the bench. We're now in the far corner. So you can see the leisure slash therapy pool and it's separate basin from the lap pool. You can see the windows and the glass door that enter into the staff room. You can see the entrance into the family style change rooms. And you can see the rest of the lap pool there as well. So if anyone's curious, when I stand up, I can't see it very well. So in this area, you can see there's a set of stairs that go into the lap pool. And then there's also a very long ramp that comes in. This is a half wall, so that's dividing the ramp from the rest of the pool basin. So that if you're doing lap swimming or competition swimming or anything like that, you're not, you know, you're not pushing the waves into the accessible spaces. Again, for the leisure and therapy pool, there's double entrances here with stairs. And then there's also a curved ramp that comes in. So it's accessible this direction as well. Over in this corner is what we're kind of naming, the mini lazy river. So it's a section of jets. They can be used, of course, for, you know, leisure purposes. Whether that's to push a child around on a floaty, you know, to lay there and let your body float around. But they're also incredibly useful when it comes to therapeutic use of the pool because we're able to keep this pool at a separate temperature. There'll be no more of that, you know, coming in with babies and the temperature is cold because, you know, the aqua jets were lap swimming. So we're able to keep this one a little bit warmer. The jets actually walking back against the jets is a really interesting way that we've seen a lot of people use those kind of lazy river styles in a more therapeutic viewpoint. You can see, if you can see, there's a little bit of a darker cylinder in the front foreground there. That is where there's kind of a umbrella shaped spray accessory. There's also a couple in the lazy river wall. And then there are smaller, shorter ones in this little area up here. This area is raised, so it's only about four inches deep. So that means that it's suitable for all abilities. It's also suitable for parents to bring very small children to get them acclimatized and used to being in the water. So our viewpoint of this area is that it's going to be really welcoming to all different members of our community regardless of age and ability. Okay, so this is another viewpoint. You're standing in, I guess, the opposite corner to where we were before. You're up close to the ramp, so you can kind of see the ramp access. And you can see a little bit better the raised area where there's individuals seated there in the four inch depth. There's also some bench seating where you can see they've got the gentleman. So that's a bench seating area within the leisure therapy pool space. And to your right, hard to make out a little bit, but you can see there's, looks to be two young children and that is in the multipurpose room. So it's all glass. We've got access from the pool deck into the multipurpose space. That means that it can be used for all sorts of different activities, whether it's birthday party rentals, whether it's staff training, first aid, all of those kinds of things where we wanna have access to both the nadatorium space and a more multipurpose or office-like space. I think we're going to go into there next. Okay, so this is the multipurpose room. Then you can see the access. There's a door there on your right hand side. So that gives you full access out onto the pool deck. And then to your left, there is also a door there and that goes straight out into the reception space. So if you are bringing things in and out for presentation or a course or a birthday party or something like that, you have full accessibility to that space. And I think we're just gonna tour you around this space a little bit. So this is just from a different angle. You'll see, you can kind of see on the left hand side, there's space there for a screen. So that means all education purposes will be able to plug in. You'll be able to do your presentations or teach your courses there. We've got long tables and chairs that people can take part in those discussions and those meetings. We've got kind of a little bit of a kitchenette style there. So if you are hosting a birthday party and you're serving food, you'll be able to do so there as well. Okay, so that was everything for the architectural renderings. I added this one up there for anyone that wants to see a little bit more of an engineered style drawing, bird's eye view of the facility. Cleaned it up a little bit, but I know they can be a little bit confusing to look at. So if you are interested at all when it is in print, you'll be able to take a better look at where everything is. But I'll just show you guys just to go over it. So they are labeled, this is the vestibule area where you're gonna come in, enter the reception area, your multipurpose or activity room. You can come down this hallway, reception over here. You'll pass what would be the staff room and a public washroom, a janitorial space. And then into this larger area which is considered the family change room. So there are, there's a fully accessible stall. So this is change room, bathroom. You'll see bathrooms here as well as change spaces that also have showers. So you can enter in, you can change. And then behind that, there's also a shower. You'll see lockers and bench areas that are kind of grayed out here. Toilets, you'll see family-based change rooms. So if you have, you know, multiple people, you're a guardian and you're bringing two kids with you, you'll have room to bring them in and get everyone changed and out onto the pool deck at once. I know that was always a struggle at the old pool is, you know, you've got your son with you and your daughter with you and which one do you send on their own? Or a dad brings their daughter or mom brings their son? And how do you get that done and get everyone out onto the pool deck without losing them in the dressing room anywhere? Again, on this side, you'll see more lockers, double-sided, more bench seating. And then again, the same style which is a dressing room and then a shower as well. So you can use both spaces. On your left over here, you'll see pool storage space, our electrical room. And downstairs exit to our mechanical room. And then out onto the pool deck and the leisure slash therapy pool. Just in case you're taking a look at it later. And then this is, so this is a pool elevation diagram. Again, it's an engineered drawing, but it helps you maybe get a little bit of an understanding of how this pool basin works. So you can see on the top drawings, you can see the entrance by the stairs. You can see the ramp. We're going from one meter out to 2.8. So you'll be able to kind of see it's, if you were in the old pool at all, you'll know it's flipped, it's backwards to the layout of our previous aquatic facility. And then down here again, you can see just a little bit further on the breakdown of the pool elevation and where the stairs go in and then the ramp as well. So with this project, there's a couple different points that I would like to make. Firstly, the depth. There is a zero point access on the leisure pool as well as in the lap pool. So that means walking in, if you're coming in from the ramp or the stairs, you're not having to climb out using a traditional pool, you know, ladder, which can be difficult for people. So this is built in. It means that this is a fully accessible space. It's fully accessible for both spectators and for participants. So access to spaces like these in our communities, they encourage a feeling of acceptance and involvement. They foster a sense of belonging and community. So that's why it was so important to us to make sure that the space fully and comprehensively is fully accessible to anyone that wants to come in and enjoy watching or participating. So it's both an investment in our aging population, which I know is a worry for anyone living in communities. We're seeing that kind of all over. It's a place for, also for our youngest community members as well to learn in a safe environment. It encourages social interactions. It encourages further development, both social and physical. We want to make sure that we are offering opportunities for low-impact exercise, whether that means, like you said, you've come with a hip replacement or a knee replacement. You are recovering from an injury. Doesn't matter if you're a full-time athlete. We wanna make sure that there is opportunity for enhancing cardiovascular health, which we know promotes overall health in our communities. We wanna promote flexibility and we wanna enrich the lives of our community members. If anyone has any questions as well, I feel, I think we all feel that this project is important to not only our community, but our region as well. And that it's gonna offer, you know, people that are living in communities that are surrounded by lakes and water 24/7, a safe and accessible way to access water safety. And if anyone has any questions about anything else, feel free to ask me. Then I'll turn it over to Lynn.
Actually, if you have questions, ask Kate while I try to look mine.
I think it should be.
I have one question.
Yeah.
When we earlier talked about it, that there was a space that if we got funding eventually, like even after it opens to add a sauna, is that capability still there with this design?
Um, I don't know for sure that I was here when that was discussed. I don't see it being something that would fit, not necessarily because of the design of the space, but because of the actual physical location of the pool, right? There's, if you're thinking about, and I didn't add it in here, I can add it into our print information. If you're thinking about the size of our past location or our past pool compared to this one, this is a much larger facility. So it's already, I think it is, quote me if I'm wrong, I think about three inches away from the furthest that it can go. So that this building.
Yeah, I see you're in the mechanicals area, which looks pretty full, or in the storage area, it was around there somewhere. Give a sauna, you decided to come before.
There's no plans, Karen, for.
At this time?
No, no, I know, yeah, yeah.
But yeah, for floor plan wise, with the mechanical room and everything that they, how they have it laid out, there's no room. There's no foresight in putting a sauna in there as well. I think that might have been one of the wishlist items that would have been ideally put in the building that probably had to be removed due to cost.
Yeah, no, no, it was never affordable at the time. And it was, it was talked about, do you remember this, Lynn?
Yes, I do remember that, yeah.
If funding came available.
I think, I think even if funding came available because of the size of this build and the lot that we're on, that there isn't any physical space anywhere to expand further. Because we really are at, I think we are three inches from potential roadway there. Because it's definitely, I think it's about one and a half times the size of our past builds, so.
Yeah, we've stretched this level from a two-story building from the old pool to a single level with a small basement for the mechanical pumps in the filtration area. So we are, we have literally squeezed this thing in between water mains and sewer mains and had to adjust it to fit.
Yeah, and that does fit as well with making a space that is fully accessible, right? Making sure that the corners and the turn radiuses are wide enough to meet those needs. We've had to expand the floor plan. So it may look to some people that don't require walking aids or wheelchairs or anything like that. It may seem like, you know, these are really big expansive open spaces. But when you're bringing people in that require those aids, we wanna make sure that everyone has space to move around and manipulate and be in that building with whatever they need to do so. So that's why it may look kind of on paper, like you said, or if you're down at that spot and you're looking at the fencing and you're thinking, oof, this seems, you know, pretty large. Why can't we fit something like that in? That tends to be the case building these new accessible buildings is that they take a lot more floor space.
It's beautiful, huh?
Thank you, we're very happy with it. I know our engineers have gone back and forth a million times. So, yeah, Eric.
Yep, one or two quick questions. Obviously, Karen mentioned the sauna. One of the things that's been always close to my heart about the Aquacentre is the presence of a weight room. I see that that's not going to be in this draft.
No, no, so we don't have any plan to build a weight room. We do have the weight room at the community hall. And then we also obviously have salves just outside city hall as well. So I think those needs for our community at this time are being met and fulfilled.
Okay, one other question too. And this might just be one of the things with CAD rendering that just being factored in with. You mentioned the diving blocks, everything like that.
Yeah.
Also noticed, there's no lifeguard towers in the areas.
No, there aren't. So with new builds and new aquatic facility builds, physically building in the lifeguard towers isn't really best practice anymore. So most of them are based on a movable piece. It's not high up in the air and it's not built into the ground. So it's something that's on wheels, that's lockable. They call them stations and they're able to rotate if need be. So if there's programming happening in the leisure or the therapy pool, we would be able to move our guards rotations to make sure that that piece is being looked after. If there's programming happening in both the smaller pool basin and the large lap pool, again, we're able to shift. So it allows us a little bit more movement. When it comes to programming, we're not stuck in that rigidity of having the lifeguard stationed in only one location.
To follow up on that, looking at the renderings too, especially on the outside of the pool deck over by the windows, there doesn't seem to be a whole lot of space. Like obviously people will be able to walk by there and sit on the bench, it's just fine. But if one of those lifeguard stations is set up there, could that pose an issue for accessibility or with space?
Yeah, so we looked at that a little bit. Again, it's hard with the architectural drawings to really get a sense. But we did have to measure everything out. So everything had been measured, even the access of a spinal board, right? And making sure that we have full access, should that ever be required in the space, to make sure that there's full turn radius. So I think the drawings are, sometimes the CAD drawings are a little bit, you know, they're hard to really bring into real life. They do the best they can. But we made sure that, that they've measured those spaces for those requirements. I know what you mean though, it looks kind of narrow in those photos. Yeah, absolutely.
I'm just thinking like if somebody's coming by for like Aquafit or something like that, or somebody's coming in who may have an mobility issue.
Yeah, absolutely, fitting a wheelchair and a lifeguard station.
Yeah, exactly, now you gotta contend with getting around that.
Yeah.
That's why.
Yeah, for sure. So we did as well, obviously we have the architects working on this project. We have the engineering firm working on this project, who's also the construction firm that we're using. But we did have our full pool build looked over by the Life Saving Society. So Dr. Chris Love is a specialist in safety and risk management when it comes to aquatic facilities. And he was able to review this design with us. If anyone's heard of some of the other pool builds that have happened, Manitoba or Saskatchewan over the last little while, there's always things that you don't think of. So having Chris and his team be able to look over it both from a safety and risk management standpoint as well as from a programming standpoint, they were able to draw our attention to some of those things. Anything else? If not, oh, sorry.
It seemed like there were a lot of places to change.
So the total number is seventeen?
Oh, is that okay? It didn't say seventeen.
Um, I know, I know. Again, it's hard to see on the drawings as well. So there's both the change rooms that have the showers attached to them. There's the change rooms which would be more like a bathroom stall with a toilet. And then there's those four family stalls, which would be a little bit larger in capacity. I think they're four foot. I think it's a four foot radius. And then a six to eight foot radius for the accessibility one in the corner. So, yes.
Change room for old, old air dryer guy?
Thank you for buying this week's paper, George.
It was a really good effort.
Thank you. That was, God, that was a nasty sight.
So.
It wasn't you, George. Some other dude.
Another old guy.
Okay, let's see if we can figure this out from a financial standpoint.
Okay. Uh, yeah, I know this is the pool that we're building, but I'm really excited about the fact that we have capacity within this new pool with the leisure aspect of it to have children of that age who can sit in this shallower water and play. And we could not do that in the previous pool. Similar to, we'll get to some of the pricing around what we think in terms of revenue streams for this new pool. And Kate can talk about some of the programming that we now have access to as well. So I'm gonna start over there in that corner. The top number, the sixteen point nine million is our current estimated Class A budget. So a Class A budget is a budget that is fairly stable and that there isn't much of an expectation of either up or down. Because at this stage of the game, they have, they've locked in some of their suppliers. They're pretty clear in terms of what they're going to need. And so that sixteen point nine million, in the Class A budget, it talks about how there's still a five percent contingency. You always need a contingency, no matter what number you think you are secured at. But when I did this, I actually added back ten percent contingency because I'm, you know, I'm kind of anxious. So I like to make sure that I have room to play. So we started our sixteen point nine estimated Class A budget, but we have already done some work. So we've spent eight hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars during the design phase. We've spent just over a million, slightly over a million for the foundation that we've put in. We had the opening ceremony or the double shovel over by the water treatment plant. And so the remaining work is valued at fourteen point nine. And then I've added back my ten percent contingency. So the number that I'm working with is sixteen point four million. And that's to finish, that's to complete everything. So approved provincial funding was a little over two point eight million because we've done some work. We've utilized seven hundred and eleven thousand of that. So the remaining provincial funding is just over two point one million. Approved federal funding, three point four. And we've utilized some federal funding as well with the remaining federal funding of two point six. We have. Yeah, uh, one of the things that has happened for all those projects that were approved prior to COVID that were ISIP, which is a. Pre-party municipal provincial and federal government agreement that um. That those projects, because they were affected negatively by COVID and the cost of transportation and all the the supply chain challenges. Would be given the ability to utilize gas tax money, um, and it would not be considered a stacking on federal government funds. Uh, because normally you wouldn't be able to stack more federal government money on top of more federal government money. But the ISIP projects, there's a handful of them across the country, we're one of them, we were given um the permission, I suppose, to utilize gas tax funds for the pool. So, uh, just to talk a little bit about, you see the same eight hundred and fifty two and the seven hundred and eleven numbers there that we've already spent. Our total costs that we've expended to date, not all are completely in there because the lifesaving uh society cost us some money. We moved to Manitoba Hydropole or that was kind of costly, so we've done a few extra things. And so our actual cost that we've expended so far is a little over two point one million. Five hundred and sixty nine thousand is what was left after our federal and provincial share. And so what we did from city, um, we utilized the community reserve and nuclear waste money, we talked about that a number of times. And then we had started putting uh funds from our capital plan, so taxation. Uh, funds away starting in twenty twenty one, so four hundred thousand dollars a year, twenty twenty one, twenty two, twenty three, and twenty four coming up, we'll do it again. And so we did have some reserve money that we could take out then and utilize towards that, so that's where we've got to today. Okay, here's my expenditures about how I'm moving forward. So, we're going to be starting. Somewhat soon.
Next week.
Next week.
Be mobilizing next week.
Yeah, next week.
Uh, trailers will be moving outside.
Okay. So, um, everything is in quarters, um, we need to report federally, provincially, essentially in quarters, they will ask us for reporting during those time periods. And so these are my projections as we go through uh the first quarter, um, twenty twenty four, twenty five, and these quarters are based on the provincial and federal. Fiscal years, not our calendar year. So the fourth quarter is like a January to the end of March, so just to not be confused about how we're going one, two, three, four. So first quarter, April first to the end of June. I'm expecting that our construct- construction cost will be about one point nine million by the time the invoices get to us. And we'll utilize federal and provincial uh share for that, leaving our share of uh five hundred and twenty thousand, which will go back into the reserve from uh our capital plan funding. We'll use some of the seven hundred and some thousand dollars we have cash, and we'll act, we'll allocate uh gas tax funding, so we have no need for loans. In the first two quarters, uh, second quarter, I'm looking at about a two point five million dollar construction cost. Uh, because we're getting, that's probably that, that's probably the highest time period of construction. Although the third quarter you'll see is a little bit higher, that's because the invoices will probably not come out till then. So even though we'll be doing more construction into the line to September than October to December, we'll probably be paying more of the invoices. In October to December, because that's when we'll get them. And so, uh, in the third quarter, you see there's the green line on the bottom, so what happens in the third quarter is we've utilized all of our current. Provincial and federal funding, and I say current because we are still asking for funding. So, I and I don't know what that's gonna look like, so I haven't, I haven't said we're gonna get any, but we are gonna get some. Right, we gotta keep going forward, but we don't, we run out of provincial and federal money at that point. And so we're still uh providing the fundraising, we have fundraising funds that go all the way across the entire till twenty twenty six. Um, right there I've shown that we've used, if we stick with our budget that I'm projecting, we will have used one point eight million in in uh. Proceeds from fundraising, that leaves us a little bit more money for furniture, for like little niceties, that kind of thing. And if when we get to the very end, the fourth quarter, that seven hundred and eighty two thousand is kind of a wrap up amount, I'm hoping that we don't have to spend that, because that's kind of into my ten percent by then. So we might not have to spend that, if we don't, then we're gonna really have quite a bit of money left over from fundraising, and we'll be in a really good position to buy things that we need that. We might not have planned for because we couldn't necessarily afford. So, third quarter, uh, we're looking at a construction loan of one point three million, and it just continues to um to to grow. During the construction loan period, we do not pay back the loan, we only pay the interest on the loan. And then what happens is, at the end of the project, that, like that principal amount is seven point three million dollars. If that's our worst case scenario, that's what our debentures will be, and we'll talk about that in further slides. Thank you, okay. This is our current debentures, this has nothing to do with the pool, this is from water treatment plant, uh, Cliff Lake and some Main Street renewal, so. The highlighted ones, by the time we get to twenty twenty six, those payments, which are about three seventy two, just under four hundred thousand dollars, will have dropped off. We will no longer be paying those. And then the the Main Street renewal of twenty twenty seven will come off, twenty twenty nine, by the time we get to twenty thirty, twenty thirty one, we will have paid every other debenture off. The only debenture left will be the pool. So even though in this time period where we're going to start taking the debenture out in twenty twenty six, twenty twenty seven. Uh, you'll see, there is a little bit of a bump up in the mill rate, but as each year goes by, the capacity for that mill rate to start going back down is there. As those numbers fall off, so just to keep in mind. Okay, so looking at the pool all by itself, this is what a possible debenture could look like. And I say that because we won't know what the interest rate is until twenty twenty six. Uh, RBC is who we've been talking to to get numbers from, and they won't give us an interest rate now because the expectation is that by twenty twenty six it will be substantially lower. And that would be helpful, so I've just guessed at a about a ten percent interest rate, which I'm hoping is really high and it'll be really low. But I want to make sure we can, we know what we're working with. So our payment would be the seven hundred and forty six thousand dollars, that would be an annual payment for twenty five years. In two thousand and thirteen, our annual payment was one point one million, because that's when we started with some of the debentures for for the water, wastewater. Okay. So, before we get to the mill rate, I'm also gonna talk about operating costs. So this is our two thousand nineteen, that's the last time we had a full year of the pool. So that's our revenue and our expenses with a net loss of five hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. The projected new pool, and this is where I'm actually gonna ask Kate to step in for a minute, just to talk about some of these possible agreements and programming.
He's ready now, um, so, okay, so you can see on here the numbers from twenty eight, twenty nineteen pool operating costs. Um, and then the projected new pool, so of course we've got, um, we've got a five thousand dollar roughly in there from grants, that could be, of course, um, smaller, we could. Could be larger, um, agreements though, you can see there that we've got fifteen thousand dollars. So what we've arranged with the agreements, um, and what we're talking about for possible ideas, uh, are agreements that can be can be made with organizations such as the Northern Regional Health Authority. Um, being able to offer what will be one of the only. Accessible pools in the north, um, absolutely on on our side of partition, if you've been to the paw, you've you've seen their pool, um, it's also quite. Aged at this point and is not an accessible place to be, um, offering something like that leisure and um therapeutic pool. Means that we offer opportunities for physiotherapy, for occupational therapy, for rehabilitation. In that pool basin itself, as well as making sure that our pool basin and our lap pool is completely accessible. So what we've got listed here is the potential for agreements for those kinds um of projects and and teamwork within the north, so. We're very hopeful um that that that'll be something that we move forward with with the RHA. Um, you can see next rentals with an increased dollar amount there compared to the twenty nineteen, offering that multipurpose space. Um, being able to hold things like birthday parties, training, brings us back into, if anyone had ever taken a scuba diving lesson, a canoe class. A learn how to kayak, um, emergency water safety, any of those kinds of trainings. That at this point in time are not being offered in the north at all on a regular basis. Uh, we will, we're hoping to see, and I think we're projecting to see an increase on our rentals due to that capability, so we're going, um. We're we're, you know, we're jumping ahead into, uh, you know, new trends. Um, and and what that facility itself is gonna allow us to provide when it comes to rentals. Um, passes again, we were operating for looking at twenty nineteen, a little bit under what was an average price for operations, so, um. Our passes were uh on the lower end compared to a stereotypical facility like ours. Um, and programming fees as well, we were operating a little bit lower, obviously post-COVID things do have a little bit of a higher dollar range, so you can see a hundred and forty four thousand. Which was an average um pool operating income, uh, we're looking at a little bit higher, two hundred and eighteen thousand. Um, that's just based on the fact that having this. Location built the way that it is, is going to open so many different opportunities for agreements, for rentals, and for use of this facility that our old facility didn't have.
Yeah, actually, just to add to that as well, um, a very preliminary conversation, but one that was um brought to my attention was with regards to um. The the whole, the new hotel that um we have the sign over there for the Ramada, they won't have a pool. So they would be interested in purchasing passes and agreements with us, I didn't consider any of that when I put that in there, so I think that there's much more possibility than the two hundred and eighteen.
Is this uh one of our facilities that's included in our agreement with the school division in which they would use this at no cost?
There's, yeah.
So we do have a shared services agreement with the Flimpon School Division at this time, obviously we would have to um sit down with the school division and and determine what that would look like. Um, the thing is, during those daytime uses, sometimes it's useful for us to bring in students that are taking their swimming lessons. Because then they're able to come with their families in the evenings, they're able to participate in other programs, they are comfortable in that space and they're able to. You know, bring their families and and have events there and things like that, so I think sometimes if we if we do decide to move forward with a shared services agreement. Regarding the pool and and bringing all of those kids back in that were taking their lessons, um, not just within. The Flimpon School Division, but that opens us up to Frontier School Division, to Creighton School Division, to um. You know, other communities outside on the Saskatchewan side as well that used to bring, used to bring their students in as well at a minimal cost. Um, but it then means that they're coming in and they're bringing all of their friends and families with them.
So I didn't, I didn't want to seem too excitable about revenue, but I do think the two hundred and eighteen is low, I think that we will do much better. Um, and so then expenses are gonna be substantially reduced as well, the sight lines in the pool, we talked about the the movable chairs things. Um, so there will be a a reduced need for staffing, um, energy efficiency, did you want to comment on that?
Sorry, I guess I'll introduce Mike really quickly, Mike Funk works for us at the City of Flimpon, he's also, when it comes to this project, we call like our in-house project manager, so. Um, he's, he's got a lot of knowledge about this stuff and spends a lot of time with our our engineers and our design firm.
Uh, right now we are exceeding uh our, the minimum energy efficiency standard in Manitoba, um, by a considerable amount. So to operate this facility is gonna be substantially cheaper than the old one.
Yeah.
Uh, a lot more energy efficient, uh, with the even the windows, the insulation, the roof cladding, uh, everything is is. Outbumping beyond the minimum standard, so we are definitely meeting and exceeding standards in Manitoba.
Yeah. Yeah, we made sure, um, I guess just to expand on that point, we made sure when we're discussing with Ernst Haunt, which is our engineering firm and our construction firm. Um, that being as green as possible when running a recreation facility, which are not necessarily the um most green facilities in the country. Um, that that was something that was important to us, that we want to focus that way, we want to also um open availability to further granting. Um, you know, and more opportunity to move forward into that a little bit further when it comes to green building, so again, that opens up further funding streams as well.
Yes, exactly, and that's another option, um, the granting that I put in here for revenue was fairly small as well, maybe just some small programming grants, but that doesn't stop us from asking for larger amounts of money. So that could change as well. Um, repairs and maintenance, of course I have a smaller amount there because it is a new pool, surely to goodness we won't have to fix too many things, but you know, there might be the odd thing. Uh, utilities is part of the energy efficiency, program- programming materials, I actually bumped it up because we will be looking at programming and making sure that we have the materials that we need to do the programming, which will bring in the revenue. So there's some things to consider there, and facility uh materials are about the same. In comparison, I wanted you to see a couple of our other facilities, uh, Whitney Forum, Community Hall, and the new Aqua Center. Um, conservatively is going to be the least costly of all of our facilities. Okay, tax impact, um, so the the debenture and the operating. Will bump us up under three mils. So, and that is only for the first year or two, when, before we start dropping off those other. Final debentures from the water work that we've done, and then that mill rate, municipal mill rate, could end up going back down. So that's the full debenture and the full operating, and so you can see, for instance. Um, if you have a property, and this is based on assessed value, so this is, it's, at this point, it's not a special service levy. It's not um divided equally among each household, it's based on assessed value of the property. So, um, the smaller property with the lower assessed value, they could be looking at about a sixty dollar increase per year. And the larger properties will be a little bit larger. Thank you. Yeah, yes, I I'm going to print everything I have, it will be in the handout, all of it, okay, okay. And and so I guess then, you know, sometimes there's always the question why, um, other than the fact that it's great to have a brand new Aqua Center, but. I think it's really important, and I don't normally read my slides, but I'm gonna read these too, because I'm really feel strongly about this. Uh, according to the National Institutes of Health, health equity is the condition in which everyone can attain full health potential. And no one is disadvantaged from achieving this potential because of social position or any other socially defined circumstances. Community aqua- aquatic facilities are vital in filling this gap and creating a more equitable future for people in diverse neighborhoods. Where significant space, economic or climate challenges limit swimming pool access, if we didn't have one, our swimming pool access would be very limited. Investing in new facilities that nurture public health and well-being seem like a given, after all, the scientific community has clearly established. The benefits of physical activity for educational outcomes and illness prevention. Public aquatic facilities provide multi-generational benefits in health, wellness, water safety training, and recreational access. Public aquatic programs support and benefit communities in a myriad of ways, these programs provide many health and wellness offerings to the community. Swim lessons, summer camps, serving as cooling centers, senior fitness water, aerobics classes, health therapies and fitness training. Water safety programs help save lives, research has shown that there are often racial and economic disparities in access to these programs and the risk of death by drowning. Programming availability is required to save lives, improve access for all in an equitable and affordable manner. Aquatics programs allow the community to come together for play, competition, fitness, and learning at all ages. Community swim programs providing access to educational facilities create a stronger relationship with community, increasing access, public engagement, and jobs for students. And this is our community. We will be providing a holistic opportunity for health. Meaningful choices in leisure activities, mental health and wellness. Yeah, I I just, I can't say anymore. Questions?
Yeah, if anybody has any questions, please feel free. And like Lynn said, we will have um both of our PowerPoints together, and the slides are, uh, will be provided um by Monday morning at City Hall, and. I think we could also probably get it on the website as well for anybody wanting to see it, um, you know, on their phone or on their computer.
Yes, absolutely, we'll put.
Oh, we'll make a comment anyway, it's okay, because, you know, I've been in favor of this all along, uh, I haven't changed what I ought to.
Yeah.
What I find interesting is that when I started off on this adventure, you know, with you people, and I'm not doing the work you are, but as I'm following along. Is that I was looking at most of these things as theoretical, and we looked at the Florence Pool Park, the re uh, the resistance that you can get from the water. All. All these things that you can do for people who have special needs. And suddenly, you know, we're looking and I'm seeing more and more as part of our own lives within the course of, before we even have this thing built, seeing where all these things are going to come into play. So I'm, I'm so glad that we made the decision, you know, to go forth with this, and it is worth it, and it might be a long-term payment, and I'm fine with that. I'm finally standing up to people and saying that, because when you see, you know, you start, people who started out when they first talked about it might not have had children. But at this point now, we've gone along and some of those people are going to have a different mindset because their family situation is different. Now they're looking and saying, oh, my family could use this. One family which did not exist when we first started talking about it. And the conditions that like I'm living are changing. So I just think, you know, when you're showing the people that the babies, the special needs, the pool needle folk, the pool noodle folks out there, that's, that's super. Just keep in mind that that's everybody, and, and it's a benefit to everybody. And if we can't pay for it all before it happens, it's something that's worth paying, just like all of our other infrastructure over the long term.
Yeah, for sure. I, uh, yeah, of course, I mean, we agree with, um, George's, uh, comments on that as well. And I think Lynn did a really great job of making sure that everyone can understand, um, that access to health is, is not some, something that's equality-based, it needs to be equitable. So everyone needs to be able to have access to mental health resources, whether that's, sometimes that means coming to the pool. It's warm, it's bright, it's inviting. We want to make sure that, that access is there. Um, swimming, if you're looking at any kind of swimming activities in comparison to other sport and recreation activities, is very minimal on cost. It means that it's accessible for, um, as many people as can humanly be possible. Um, again, with our accessible, physical accessibility as well. But like you said, just equitable resources and equitable options for health and wellness within our community that's going to serve not only, um, the city of Flinfon, town of Creighton, Denier Beach, Cranberry Portage, um, and, and exponentially outside of that circle as well.
I just want to also say, just to double down on what you were talking about just in the beginning, just to make sure it's out there again. Um, this is worst case.
Yes, correct.
This is the worst-case scenario, we can't stress that enough. So this is us not lobbying, this is us not getting any more money, this is us not granting at all. This is the worst-case scenario. But I can honestly tell you from our, uh, from, from where we're sitting and what our council doing is not just sitting back like, oh, well, we're just going to get the debenture and the construction loan and we're done. That is not true at all. We know that we have two more years to lobby hard for our community and for what I feel like we deserve, um, and what, uh, what we absolutely need and have to have. Uh, we just, I just signed another letter, um, to follow up on a one-on-one meeting that Mayor Fontaine and I had, um, with one of the ministers in regards to the grant. Next week, we're going to be going down to Brandon again. I will be bringing up the pool again with every person that we see, talk to. Um, so I don't want anybody to think that we're just standing back as, uh, administration and council going, okay, done, deal, um, now that we've had the public hearing. This is our money as well as it's the community's money, and we want to make sure that we get, uh, as many opportunities as we can for funding. So I just want to really say that again, that this is the worst-case scenario, but that we're moving forward with the idea that we will absolutely be getting more grants.
And I'll just add to that, that well said, everyone, it's a great presentation.
Absolutely.
It's not just, uh, pictorial, it's numbers and numbers. This, as, as Councilor Dallas Bump said, this is the worst-case scenario, which I think is a very wise way for our C A O to look at this and that. In the longer term, for people who have been and may remain to be namesayers about this project, if we are going to move forward, and we are moving forward, we are in a renaissance. That's where Flinfon is at, and that's where I think our council in the last year and a half, that's where we're at. So if we're going to be stagnant, if we're not going to look forward, if we're not going to use every, every avenue, including ministers, including granting, including local fundraising, including the regional, regional economic aspect of it, because we're regional, this isn't just Flinfon. If we're going to stay small, small and not look out ahead, we're not going to be in a renaissance. So we are, we are in a renaissance right now. It's not just about money, it's about holistic health, holistic wellness. It all ties into community, health, wellness, and safety. So from my view as a counselor, as a city councilor, yeah, this is my money too. Yes, it is, and this is worth it. Every dime is worth it. And if this is the worst-case scenario, we can still do it. So I'm, I'm happy to serve.
Just to kind of back off all that, um, this is also great for retention. Not only retention of employees here, but employees at the hospital. Like if we're looking at bringing in more doctors and more services and more people into the community and more businesses in the community, they all need retention. The bombers is great, skating is great, drama is great, arts is great, everything's great. And, but not everyone likes that. People need something that they really enjoy, and if swimming's your thing, you're going to go somewhere with a pool. And so we need that pool.
Steve's got a comment, then I think Eric has.
Well, Heather stole my, uh, idea. Well, the other thing I was going to say is kind of echoing what has been said by a number of people here tonight, including, uh, Lynn and Caitlin, the health and the mental health, but also being proactive rather than reactive, which is always sort of my personal goal, professional goal, is trying to like, how do we preempt this rather than when a situation gets critical and you have, you know, health or mental health scenarios that are really, really bad, let's be preventative and, uh, support people to get back to the need before it becomes a big problem. And good job.
Eric, yeah, Eric, here's something.
Okay, now that we've heard from every member of city council building tonight, um, I wanted to know a little bit about sponsorship, because I know that's something that, uh, the city has looked at over the last little while. Um, there was a package that was produced with a bunch of different ideas, including from naming rights or different sponsorship packages. Where is the city sitting out with that right now?
So if you're looking at, uh, what Lynn had proposed is about a seven-hundred-thousand-dollar. That includes some of our sponsorship, of course, we're moving forward with that. We have a really incredible community-based, um, fundraising committee. That committee is made up of two subcommittees. There's a finance committee and there's an events planning committee. So the finance committee is taking on the focus, um, of sponsorship. So that means meeting with, um, you know, companies, different organizations, different potential donors presenting the project and, uh, opening up that conversation with them. So it takes a long time and it's not, um, you know, it's not something that happens overnight. You saw our presentation from the Rotary Club, um, that was part of our sponsorship. We, we were successful as well, um, in getting a fifty-thousand-dollar sponsorship from Foran. Um, that's just where they're at right now. They've said, you know, we don't want to close the doors. And, you know, to continue that relationship, we obviously have a lot of other, I think, um, I think, uh, average, I think I've got about a hundred and fifty potential sponsorship options, um, for our finance committee to work on. So it takes a lot of time, but we're a small committee, but we're mighty, and we're, we're working really, really hard on that.
Okay, so that's, that's a hundred thousand for the Rotary Club, that's fifty thousand from Foran. Has there been any other sponsorship money received recently that?
No, so everything, um, everything will be put out to the public every time. So there's obviously going to be a thank you that's put out. Some companies though, um, and some donors themselves don't, uh, want public notice. You know, so there's lots of opportunity where people want to give money in a more of a, um, a silent, uh, yeah, exactly. So, so.
So have there been anonymous donors then?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, we have, um, like, uh, a sole donor that donated, I think it was fifteen thousand.
Yeah, just under fifteen thousand.
Yeah. So, um, there's a special event where they don't want to warn their names public, so we just quietly say thank you. And, um, anybody that does want to donate though, gets a tax donation receipt.
Yeah.
So just putting that out there for anybody that's going to watch this back.
Yeah.
Um, so that is something that somebody can get. So if you have a, a private foundation or a company, that they could benefit you that way as well.
Yeah, absolutely, there's lots of opportunity. If you look on the city of Flinfon website, there's a large tag, it's a large category specified to the Aqua Center project. There's opportunity there, um, to really just quick-click on a PayPal. Um, we've had people do it as Christmas gifts. You know, instead of buying gifts for family, they're spending their money donating to the pool project on their behalf. There's opportunity, um, to leave things like that in wills and, and other, um, you know, financial documents as well. We've got all of that information, uh, my personal contact information. Interested in donating, is interested on making donations on behalf of someone. Like Allison said, on behalf of your company, your organization, or personal, um, please feel free to reach out to me because I do have those packages available. And, uh, we'd be happy to have conversations on what that can look like.
And they can't get a taxable receipt for anything over twenty dollars.
So, do corporate donations get included as part of the community contribution for the project? Or do they get sorted into a different pot of funding?
Um, right now, they are being, because it's being done by the community committee, it's being put into our, that two million dollars. So that two million dollars that we're hoping to raise in donations also includes sponsorship. Um, like you said, things like naming rights. We, we already announced that with the Rotary Club. The Rotary Club, um, has already decided that they will be, um, taking naming ownership of that multipurpose space. You know, whether it's called the, the Rotary, Flinfon Rotary Club, um, Activity Room or Multipurpose Space or, or whichever name they, they go ahead with. All of those naming opportunities for things outside of just the facility itself are available, but are counting towards our two million dollars, um, that we're hoping to raise.
The other thing too, Eric, is we've been the benefactor of the, um, previous work of the committee that's been doing that work for probably six or seven or eight years now.
Fifty.
Yes, yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
And so that has put us off to a really good start.
How much money still needs to be raised through that community contribution? Do we have a figure on that?
Well, we're around seven hundred.
Yeah, we're around seven hundred thousand and we're looking at two million, one point, yeah.
One point three, okay, approximately.
Approximately, yes.
Yeah.
All right. Perfect, I think that would be it for me.
Okay, hi Karen.
Yeah, I just want to say, first of all, thank you to this council and administration for continuing. This has been part of my life, as you all know, for how long. Um, and I want to say that, like, even after I was off council, I got calls. I got a senior calling one day crying because she heard rumors through social media that, that the pool was being stopped. And she was so upset. And being involved in the fundraising committee and so many people approaching or still, they always ask me about the pool over and over. The positivity in the community breaking out towards this new pool is amazing. The comments that are being made and when is it opening? Well, and I'll say too, I can't see no zoom now. It's, it's just been amazing, so thank you.
Jenny, Greg, yeah.
So Karen, what do you think?
Yeah.
Um, I guess if there's no other things that I'll read, what Greg has written in a letter.
Yeah.
So, um, he says, I'm in favor of a new Aqua Center. The community chooses to and can afford the carrying costs supporting the debentures of up to seven to eight million and annual operating losses of three to four hundred thousand. And he notes that the operating deficits for Kendra's Leans' wonderful pool this, um, last, uh, year were over five hundred thousand dollars. When the project started, they had been assured that the construction costs wouldn't exceed eight million. That's obviously changed rather dramatically since then. Um, and that building a new Aqua Center did not increase level task bills. So both of those have proved to be false. And he says it's likely that construction costs will double. And that's, I guess, what we show in there, insisting one time is what's shown now. And this is coming at a time when the Hud Bay granted move of taxes to the city has decreased by two million dollars a year and the general task base has continued to shrink. Uh, wire bills are set to rise, and last year, there was no money in the budget for road maintenance. I believe that the taxpayers and owners of Flinfon should be provided with the numbers regarding construction and operating costs of the proposed pool, including how those costs will be reflected and passed on through the debentures and increased taxes. Um, he says, a referendum should be held, allowing the community to make an informed decision on whether to proceed with this project. And he says, thank you for allowing him the opportunity to address the important matter. And thank you to Lynn for, um, her hard work and always answering his many phone calls. But I think that if he was here, the question he would want to ask is about the, the tax. Because you said how much it is for those, uh, lower assessed buildings, but how much is it going to be in dollar form for people on there?
That's in there as well.
Yeah, the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar assessed property, um, the last year's taxes would have, our, our municipal taxes, by the way, the school taxes are not in that. So would have been two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-ninety-eight. And with the, um, under-three-mil increase for both the debenture and the operating, um, it would be three-thousand-two-hundred. So what is that, about four-hundred dollars, something like three-sixty? Yeah, yeah.
And is that in, in considering decreases to the grant and lieu as well? Or is that the grant and lieu remain study?
Unfortunately, we can't predict what the grant and lieu is going to do. However, I do want to comment. Um, one of the things that has happened has, there has been some good news lately with regards to Hud Bay as well. The Mayor-Benny agreement, um, has indicated that they're interested in providing more exploration in three specific areas for Hud Bay. Um, in my mind, um, that seems to me as though there will be more people brought forward to work on those projects. And when there are more people who are working, whether it's for Mayor-Benny, because they're actually being paid by Hud Bay, then the Hud Bay numbers are going to go up. And so we're now into April, so at the end of April, that will be January, February, March, April, that'll be four months. I'm going to ask Rashard to give me another indication on what the numbers are for the fourth, for next, last four months, because I believe they are going to stabilize.
Will this package be available online when you said your?
Yes, yes, you might not see it till Monday morning, but we'll figure, we'll get it all figured out and, uh, up on the website. We'll have it all printed, ready for people to come and pick up as well.
What I found, since you brought that up, what I found reassuring was this particular sheet right here, because it is income-based. You said, I often have strong feelings that I think that everybody should pay. Uh, you know, you're all getting the services, you should all be paying. But in this particular case, it's being paid on a value-for-property basis.
Yeah.
So anybody who's in a lower-value property, presumably lower-paying jobs, I'm assuming, is paying less towards us. Anybody who is in a higher area presumably can afford to be in the area they're in and can handle a slight increase to get those. So I'm comfortable with this system right here. The only part, as you know, and my own personal part, that I find that I'm never comfortable with is that it's our community paying for it, and that it's going to be open to everyone else. So my only other comment is going to be that I would like to see some forms of, when you had your income sheet up, some forms of saying, okay, and it goes, it, it, it goes back to a reason why I put out the question as to whether this is part of our agreement with the school division. Because it is a benefit, it's a benefit to our kids, it'll be a benefit to Creighton's kids, to their beaches, the shambles, we're the most ones to come up.
Yeah.
But somehow along the line, we have to find some way where they don't just come up and pay the same, because every taxpayer here is already funding this. So, you know, uh, I would be, you know, my viewpoint is always a part of that.
Yeah, and that's, that's good, because we can continue those conversations with those communities and those entities as well.
Yeah, because, you know, it's, uh, you want the service. And it's, when you talk about retention, it's not just retention for Flinfon, it's retention for Creighton's. You know, all those kinds of things, it's a benefit for those. But I think we have to have some kind of a financial repercussions towards that. Over time, I don't want it to stop us because we don't have the agreement now, but I want that to still remain a mode of contention and penalty.
But the really good thing about that is that wasn't included in my revenue list. And so anything that we can bring in that is going to increase that revenue stream side of it is going to reduce the costs and will bring this down as well.
Well, I guess one of the things I would like to say publicly for everybody is that we will be next weekend, Brandon, we will be talking about the pool. But the following, you will be in Regina and Sulu's and others. And that should be brought up to them, saying, we are providing you a service and we're getting, we're fighting every other issue here. We're, we're, we're working on, uh, health benefits as a group, as a unit, as a region. And not just health, but we're down, we're, we're in the planning stages of our, uh, our dumps, our, uh, regional landfills and with Saskatchewan. So we're doing all those things. So when we're doing that, we have to have those conversations with them and say, okay, we're doing that, we're funding together, we're finding the work together. But remember, these things too, where we're picking up the tab. So I want us to be lobbying when we're in, uh, in Regina and talking to the Saskatchewan politicians. You know, we will give you the benefits, but we would like some return. So we have to be pushing that. When you mentioned lobbying, that's one of the jobs that we will have to be doing publicly and that our people know that we are pushing for that. and that our people know that we are pushing for that.
Absolutely. If I can just add on there, Mr. Fontaine, I think the one thing for the, the, this statement about the people that are in the nicer houses, it doesn't consider people that are on fixed incomes. Maybe we're retired and aren't expecting that kind of increase. So I think that's just something for them to be aware of, is that there will be changes and for us to consider those people that don't have, don't have more money coming in for watching, actually, videos of my niece on a water slide right now.
And it's a point rotation, but that's why I say we're trying to find ways to make this happen and still keep it affordable. But, but, you know, when I see that little guy go out, I think you should be thrilled that that pool's gonna be there in the end.
He's very excited about it. But I think, again, I'm trying to be here speaking for great. His concerns are just making sure that everybody aware, the taxpayers are aware of how this may impact them if the worst-case scenario does come.
And Eric, I'm sure is gonna pass everybody's opinions on when he does his article.
And I would just, pardon me, I would just add on. I would just add on to your, your comment. It's a comment well taken. But also right now, no seniors, seventy, eighty and up, who need rehab, they need better help. They know what they want, they know what they need and advise what they need. They don't have it. So when we talk about extra cost to seniors who may be living and they're still living in their own properties, paying more taxes, if we definitely have people like that, we always will, the setup for them, many of them very well may be the health benefits of better exercise, the health benefits of being referred from our R H A to rehab to this pool. Because this pool, as our director says rightly up there, is the only one in the north that has this rehab capability. So I, I think there are, well, maybe some higher costs for lower-income seniors in their homes. That very well may be well set off by improvements to their health. One more question, life curves. Have you had enough life curves by now, please, for the week?
Yeah, absolutely. So, I mean, of course, we can't predict who will be interested in taking courses like this. Currently, our current recreation programmer still holds all of her certification. We're looking at sending her to training so that she can begin training guards. We've created a relationship with the Life Saving Society out of Winnipeg. They're very aware of, of our new pool build and, you know, On the Horizon Thompson's as well. I'm also connected to Sonya, who's the Recreation Director in Thompson as well. The Recreation Directors in Swan River, the Recreation Directors and the Pool Operators in the PAW. So we are working together on a plan to share costs, whether that means meeting in the pool, whether that means Life Saving Society coming up here and training our Guards Lakefront. So we're, we're willing to do whatever needs to be done to make sure that we have the staff to do so. And all of those entities that I've mentioned are, are also willing and excited to partner and, and make sure that we're prepared as well.
Thank you. Will there be a follow-up meeting for the public to come back again and discuss once the, the information's out there to remind it through online? How those, the tax, the taxes will be?
We can talk about that as a council to determine how we want to move forward. I will say though, that when we do our financial plan, that public hearing, there will probably be some discussion in there as well. Because part of that construction loan starts in December, which is still this year. Yeah.
And there's also forms up there that you can fill out if you have any concerns or?
Yeah, I was thinking maybe you just want to print Greg's letter and we'll staple it to one of them.
Yeah, you can ask me to print it.
Okay.
Is there a day for the release of that management report yet?
Pardon me?
No, no, Joy and I are still working on it. I've been away, so, yeah.
Okay, all right. Fair enough, might as well ask.
He'll ask you that ten times a year.
I know, I know.
Somebody'll get an answer.
Not today, Eric, not today.
So I just have a whole more question. How can people engage if they're interested in volunteering or fundraising?
Yeah, absolutely. So again, on the city of Flynn Fawn website, under the Aqua Center tab, my contact information is there and I'd be more than happy to put anybody that is interested in donating themselves, in donating on behalf of their business or organization, anybody that's interested in volunteering, because I, I sit in conjunction with that committee as well. The city of Flynn Fawn Facebook page, Flynn Fawn Recreation, and the Aqua Center Fundraising Committee also has their own social media page. So you're able to get in touch with us that way as well. But my door is always open, my phone number is there, my email is there. And I am, you know, more than willing and, and very excited to see anybody that might be interested in coming and taking part. We have a lot of different projects on the go. This is kind of a multi-tiered project from construction to fundraising to events to sponsorship. And we've really got a space for everyone that, everyone and anyone that wants to come volunteer and, and join us on the project. I think that's everything?
Yeah.
Awesome, I think that's everything. Like Lynn said, we will have these printouts available. We will have them on the city of Flynn Fawn website. Thomas has been recording for us as well. I think this information will probably be shared widely throughout the community. And, and again, if anyone has any questions, you're more than welcome to contact us anytime.